Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the November 2nd, 2016 meeting of the Scarborough Town Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and if I could, I'd like to ask you to rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Councillor Baybine?
Present.
Councillor Rowan?
Here.
Councillor Caterina?
Here.
Councillor St. Clair?
Here.
Councillor Chiazo?
Here.
Chairman Donovan?
Here. And Peter Hayes has a business commitment out of town, so won't be able to be with us tonight. General public comments? Anyone wishing to address an item not on the agenda can approach the podium.
And it does change things, doesn't it?
Thank you. Minutes of October 19, 2016, regular meeting, accept the motion.
With approval.
Second.
Any comments or corrections?
None.
All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Adjustments to the agenda, I know of none, and the items to be signed are the Treasury of Warrants, which I will do later in the evening. Resolution 16-008, act on the request to approve Resolution 16-008, recognizing Saturday, November 26, 2016, as Small Business Saturday. Now, sometimes these come before us and they seem a little bit hokey. People probably don't want to know that I was born on Teriyaki Chicken Tuesday. But...
Put that in the paper.
That gets recorded in the minutes.
But that gives you the idea of how some of these are done, but this one is important. This is a resolution, and I'd like to start down at the end by having us each read a whereas clause, and if, Sean, you'd start at your end.
So I get the biggest one, right?
Yes, you do.
Wow, I'm a little verbose anyways. Resolution 16-008, recognizing November 26, 2016, as Small Business Saturday, whereas the government of Scarborough, Maine celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 28.8 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all businesses with employees in the United States and are responsible for 63% of net new jobs created over the last, excuse me, past 20 years and...
Whereas, small businesses employ over 49% of all businesses with employees in the United States and...
Whereas, 89% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses contribute positively to the local community by supplying jobs and generating tax revenue and...
Whereas, 87% of consumers in the United States agree that small businesses are critical to the overall economic health of the United States.
I wasn't sure if Tom was going to read, but... Whereas, 93% of consumers in the United States agree that it is important for people to support the small businesses that they value in their community and...
Whereas, Scarborough, Maine supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our neighborhoods and...
Whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Scarborough Town Council proclaims November 26, 2016, Small Business Saturday in Scarborough, Maine, and urges the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Public comment on the resolution? None? Discussion? Kate?
I would like to also say it's my 40th birthday that day, so if anybody wants to add that to the resolution...
Would that be Tuna Saturday?
Forty-One Woodfield Drive?
As a member of my local Scarborough and also an owner of five small businesses, and by small businesses, I mean really small businesses, because the SBA, the Small Business Association, actually says that small businesses are any entity that employs 500 employees or less, which means that most of the state of Maine, to be honest with you, is small business. I'm glad to see us pass this because I know from my own experiences here in town and in other towns, there are a lot of people who are working from home and working on small businesses, more than you would know, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you. Any other comments? I mean, I think we all join in this one, that supporting the local community is what helps, it's just part of what makes the fabric of the community tight, and so when you have the opportunity this season, this is a holiday season coming up, use that opportunity to go say hello to someone you see at the ace counter, one of these stores in town, and just appreciate that this helps out our local town. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Unanimous. Old Business, Order 1668, second reading to approve the charge for the ad hoc Public Safety Complex Building Committee and authorize the town manager to expend monies from the Public Safety Building Capital Improvement Account in an amount not to exceed $50,000. I'll look to the town manager to introduce this one.
Yes, council considered this in first reading at your last meeting. Since then, we had a number of town residents express interest in serving, and I'm pleased to report that we were able to accommodate all of them. We were able to do so by suggesting a slight revision to the size and composition of the committee, and what's before you this evening is a draft that reflects, you'll note, the red text is what was amended in first reading and blue text would be appropriate to offer that as an amendment this evening, and essentially it raises the committee structure to a total of 13 members, inserts specific names to appoint the committee, and I would note on paragraph nine on the last page, it was a bit aggressive, I originally talked about meeting weekly, I think that might be a bit too much to ask of the committee, and I suggest biweekly would be a reasonable standard to strike.
Thank you. Just for the public, so that you will know, Tom has covered the substantive changes, but I wanted to read the list of names of the people who will be members of the committee. Chiefs Thurlow and Moulson, Councillors St. Clair and Hayes, Bruce Bell, these are people from, who are residents at large, Bruce Bell, Susan Hamel, Judy Roy, Kevin Freeman, Roger Shabat, Greg Hanscom, Rick Meinke, Dave Libby. The construction expert is Rocky Rizbera. Comments from the public?
Mike Turick, 11 Bayberry Lane. I read that online this afternoon before coming in. I believe it says in there that there is $600,000 for this project. Let's tell you, I think that's wonderful. I have long advocated that people set money aside for a big expense in the future, and to have 600 grand available for this project is just beautiful. I wish we would have done the same thing with the fire trucks or truck, Skowhegan did it and we didn't, but that's a different point. I'm just here to tell you that I think it's wonderful that you did this and had the money set aside.
Thank you. Other comments from the public? See, none will close the public, and I will ask for a motion to amend.
So moved.
Oh, let's start with the motion, to put the motion, the matter on the table.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you. Motion to amend.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, public comment on the motion to amend. No, I guess not, probably. Discussion on the motion to amend.
You've been all confused since that Teriyaki Tuesday. It's okay.
I just want to make sure I'm clear, is that okay, Chair?
Yes, go right ahead.
The motion to amend is to change it to biweekly meetings, is that correct? Is that the motion?
Everything in blue.
Everything in blue, I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if we were including everything. Okay, perfect, thank you, sorry about that.
Other comments? Sean?
So, I do apologize, because I was absent last meeting for a business meeting, but can you refresh my memory, because the size of this project is going to be pretty substantial. Is this enough input in comparison to, let's say, the school project that occurred? I don't believe it's going to be, it's going to be probably less than a third the size, let alone the cost of what that was, but I just want to make sure this is representative of getting enough input. And by the way, the names that have already come forward are awesome, and you've got a former town councillor, Kevin Freeman, is, I consider a construction expert on the planning side, so I just want to make sure the size is adequate, and if we can, give the power to the committee to add additional members if necessary.
Interesting point. Jim Marie?
Through the chair to Mr. Baybine, if you look on the paragraph of membership at the end, it says although official membership is limited to...
Thirteen.
We're going to, thirteen, it says committee is encouraged to draw upon other resources and invite other key stakeholders participate in proceedings as they feel appropriate. I think that that would cover that, because they can always come back to the council if they want to change official membership or whatever, yes.
And I think that's probably the point, but if this language was insufficient, they could come back to us.
Right.
Because I agree that the size of the task could be substantial.
Thank you. Kate?
And I think two points to that, I think, one, the reason, one of the good reasons that there are two councillors on that is that no matter what, there's always going to be a councillor at a meeting, so if there are procedural problems that arise, there's a councillor there that will be able to advise them if there are any issues. And I think to Councillor Baybine's point, the reason that we decided to keep this first group small is that, this is just initial, this is the initial part of the project, so I'm guessing, I mean, this is, you know, these projects take quite a bit of time, this is year one, I'm assuming by the time we get into year two, that this group is probably going to grow like the Wentworth group did. The Wentworth group started as small when they very first started and took off, so that's what I would assume. It was my opinion at the time when we first started talking about this, that the things that we are going to be discussing, sometimes if you have too many people to start off in the beginning, it can be a little overwhelming for those that are involved, and so I'm actually happy with the size of this, and I also agree with Councillor Baybine that the group that was assembled by the manager and the chair, and I know that both chiefs had input into that are phenomenal, and I also think it was great that they decided to expand it and not leave anybody out. I mean, you never want to turn away volunteers, so, thank you.
Chris?
I'll echo Councillor St. Clair's comments. I appreciate the work we did going from three at large to eight at large, I think that shows a couple of things. One, our willingness to open that up to a bunch of different perspectives, looking for the names on this list, there's a lot of well-known quantities there. Rick Meinke from the Energy Committee, I think will be a great asset as well, but I certainly do appreciate the expansion. I think it's important to keep in mind that these guys are just going to be advising us, they're not making any final decisions, they're just going to bring their recommendations to the council, so I think it's a great start, I think it's a good makeup, and look forward to helping and assisting in any way we can.
Jim Marie?
I would also point out, under timeframe, that the council has until August 2000, excuse me, the committee, has until August 2017 to come up with a report, at which time they shall cease to exist unless the council decides to keep them going. So to me, that's really good, because if you don't put some sort of a deadline or a timeframe on it, people tend to just go on and on and on, so I like seeing this, I think it will help the group stay really focused, so I just want to point that out to folks who don't have this in front of them.
Other comments? See, none, we're going to vote on the motion to amend. All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Motion as amended is now on the floor. Further discussion? Kate?
I'd just like to say, you know, as one of the councillors that was appointed to it, thank you for that, I'm excited about it, I think it's going to be great, you know, some of this is my background, so that's kind of exciting, and I would just like to say that I know after speaking with Councillor Hayes, we're going to just take off running, so it's going to be an exciting project, and I hope that we can get, you know, everybody from the town behind it, so, thank you. And it's huge and very important to have the council's support, so thank you for that.
And thank you to the two councillors who offered, this is, it's quite a task. Will?
I'd like to extend that, to thank all the volunteers that have come forward, I think this is a, this is a big task, and I really appreciate all the citizens that step forward and volunteered their time, it's a big time commitment, and thank you, Kate, for volunteering, and Peter, wherever you are.
Further comments? See, none, all in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. New business, act on the request, no, we have one more, old business, Order Number 16-69, act on the request to approve the names that were posted by the Appointments Committee at the Town Council Meeting of October 19, 2016, and I'll look to the Appointments Committee Chair to...
Do you want me to reread them again?
Yes, if you would.
Okay. So, Planning Board, we're going to move First Alternate Roger Bealy to a full voting member with a term to expire in 2017, move the Second Alternate Robin Saunders to a full voting member with a term to expire in 2018, we're going to appoint Rachel Hendrickson as a First Alternate with a term to expire in 2019, and appoint Richard Dupre as the Second Alternate with a term to expire in 2017. These changes will take effect on November 8, 2016. And then we had another one for Coastal Waters and Harbor Committee, we're going to move First Alternate Erica Downs to a full voting member with a term to expire in 2019, and move the Second Alternate Maura Erickson to the First Alternate with a term to expire in 2019.
Accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Public comment on the Appointments Committee nominees? Discussion? Chris?
I'd just like to thank everybody, these are all volunteer positions, we seem to be very blessed lately in appointments with a plethora of people volunteering, it's better than the alternative, so, and very qualified people as well, so it's, I think it's a testament not only to the nature and the expertise of some town residents, but also their willingness to engage in civil service without any cost to the community other than their time.
Kate?
I just want to say also too, to point out that we have changed things up a little bit, and we did speak with the chairs of these committees, and that's our plan going forward in the future, is to make sure that we're communicating openly with the chairs, so that, you know, they're the ones that are in the thick of it, you know, it's very easy for us to sit behind the desk and appoint people to these positions, but they're the ones that have to work with these people, so, and it's also important to remember too, that anyone who's newly elected to these boards have a one-year probation period, which is something that we did not do in the past, and so that gives us a little bit of a cushion just in case people aren't, don't realize exactly what they're getting themselves into, so, but obviously, just like Councillor Chiazo said, thank you to everybody that comes forward, we're always looking for people, so, thank you.
And the one-year period is to allow people to gracefully back away from a commitment that turns out to be substantially greater than they might have realized at the beginning. Other comments? See, none, all in favor? Opposed? Thank you, unanimous. New business, Order 1670, act on the request to appoint Larissa Crockett, Assistant Town Manager, to the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee to fill the unexpired term of Chairman Donovan, whose term expires in June of 2018, and I'll look to the town manager.
Yes, Larissa Crockett, the new Assistant Town Manager, has long been involved with the Legislative Policy Committee in her former life with the town of Acton, so she's very familiar with the process, with the players, and I think she'll be a tremendous advocate for us, and Councillor Chairman Donovan was kind enough to step aside and allow her to assume that position, I think she'll represent as well in Augusta.
Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Public comment on this matter? None? Discussion? Jim Marie?
Having been the former Legislative Policy Committee person, I'm thrilled that Larissa's going to continue on legislative policy in Augusta along with Councillor Baybine, who was our elected delegate there. The more we have up, working with Maine Municipal to work and look at bills that are of interest and are important to municipalities, the better, so...
Thank you. Other comments? I, having had limited involvement with a policy committee, really came to the conclusion that this is an organization that benefits Scarborough as well as all the other municipalities, and it's got staff, professional people who are looking for issues that are important to municipalities, and I think it's a way, if we use it effectively, to draw ourselves closer to our own legislative delegation, which I think ought to be, may not be the number one goal or two or three, but it's certainly something that we should aspire to, to have a closer relationship there. Working people, they have a busy schedule once the season starts, which is usually December, and so it is tough to keep in touch, but I think if we work and get a little bit more insight into what the MMA is doing in their policy committee, and I think Larissa is perfect for that role, because she's a staff person, you know, she's a part of the administrative arm of Scarborough Town Government, so I think we have a unique opportunity here to allow it to help us to a much greater degree.
She'd probably be angry, perhaps not, she's also a self-professed policy wonk, so that she really, really likes this stuff, which makes it a little more palatable.
Further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you.
Order 1671, act on the request to adopt a new fund balance policy, and I'll look to the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Absolutely, thank you very much. To the, to the credit of the entire Finance Committee, we've actually been looking into this for a little bit over two years, trying to determine when it was an appropriate time to address the fiscal state of our current fund balances, in particular unrestricted funds, and what we were able to accomplish over the past, the past year is really to take a look at our existing policy, provide clarification to definitions that are more consistent with today's definitions for the types of funds that are applicable for a community like Scarborough. So the policy isn't really in a restatement form, so there is no blue and red kind of markers, because this is replacing the entire policy from before. It also provides a more, greater clarification around the format in which we will report out those balances, therefore it is standard across all departments as well as all functions within the town. Then more importantly, the boundaries have been redefined, and what I mean by the boundaries is really those policy limitations. The current policy states, and I'm going to be kind of generic in explaining this, sets the minimum limit that we will never fall below 5% of our net operating budget, gross operating budget, right, Tom?
Gross.
Gross. Gross operating budget. However, our goal is to be at 8.33%, which is equivalent to 1/12 of our operating budget, which is a GASB or an accounting standard that we are reporting. And it also sets a high limitation of 10%, and it says that if we are ever to exceed 10%, then the excess amount will go towards capital projects or programs or expenditures, as well as any other need of the town. And what we have found over time is that the fiscal health of our community is growing, and it is stable, and that we believe that it is now time to address those boundaries and increase them. And what this policy does to increase them is that we have set the minimum standard in order to really support our credit position, meaning our agency rating, is that the minimum limit will be changed from 5% to 8.33. The goal is, somewhere is around 10%, which is the former cap, and that we will not exceed 12%. And within this document, we also have expanded definitions of where that excess might go to based upon the council's direction as a whole. Before, it was a generic statement that simply said capital projects and capital planning. This actually now provides a more detailed list of five options, because they are all truly options with varying degrees of difficulty and discussion, and they include that they can be retained in non-spendable and restricted accounts that offset unfunded liabilities, and/or retained in assigned accounts that may be used for future budget cycles as a property tax rate stabilization, available for use during catastrophic events, or funding future capital expenditures and projects, that's the continuation of what it was before. The retirement of debt, and from a planning perspective, that would be the more aged debt that can be retired, because there are some debt that you can't call on because they have been bonded and promised. And then, of course, there's always the opportunity for a taxpayer refund, and this is the first policy statement where we actually address that as an option. That's probably one of the more difficult and more philosophical conversations that would have to go before the entire council, but it is an option in a truly great, great year. So we've detailed that. And then additionally, we've also added a reporting statement that says that the town manager will report to the Finance Committee annually, a statement of all fund activity. And by the, and just so you know, I believe that's new in this policy, but the manager is always as part of the budget, as well as the annual report giving us a statement. There is an attachment, which I did want to ask as a friendly amendment, if we can delete that, that was an example that the committee used on how it would look, but should not be included, because it does not represent, I think, the major categories for our town, so if we could delete that as a friendly amendment, page four, I would appreciate it. So that's my overview, unless, Chris, if you'd like to add anything as another member?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, Sean, very descriptive as always, the big, two big takeaways for me were, number one, you know, the use of fund balance, in the past, we've kept the reserve as an emergency fund in case there was some catastrophe or something like that, we'd have the reserve funds in place to be able to cover that operational expense. More often than not, it kind of serves two purposes, it also acts as kind of a reserve account where, you know, we try and absorb any major fluctuations from year to year over any specific account. So I think this, after a lot of debate in the finance, I think the numbers are appropriate. You're always leery to keep too much of the taxpayers' money in reserve, it's supposed to be for the town's benefit and working for the town, so I think this is a great compromise. I also think expanding the usage of any surplus funds is critical, in the past, we were very restricted by the previous policy of anything above had to be used towards capital, if I understood the policy correctly. So this not only expands relatively reasonably the amount of reserves we can keep on hand, it also broadens the, our ability as a council to use those excess in ways that the council feels appropriate for that particular time, so it doesn't restrict us as well.
Thank you for that introduction, I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Public comment on the resolution? Discussion? Will?
I just have a question. The appropriate uses above 12%, the second one is retained in assigned accounts, isn't that an unrestricted fund balance? So wouldn't we be essentially just keeping in, just saying we're going to expand us over... we be essentially just keeping in, just saying we're gonna expand us over 12% as an option?
Yes.
Ask you yes or no question, you gotta guess no answer.
Do you have someplace to be? Sorry.
Okay. But everything, everything else would essentially be, be reducing the amount of funds that we're keeping inside of the unrestricted.
Yes.
My understanding. Okay. Continuing. I really appreciate the, the effort here. I think it, contrasting this with the old one, I think this does, is much clearer. And I think really, from a layman's perspective, really helps me understand what we're trying to do with this. So I appreciate the effort.
Sean?
Two pieces. One is, I really want to emphasize something that Counselor Chiazo mentioned, that is about, there's always a concern about the level, not only if it's too low, but more importantly, if it's too much and too high. So one of the issues that we've heard over time, and it's not just this year, but we did hear from the auditors this past year, and that is that what we're seeing in many communities, and what is more desirable, is that to even be higher than 12%. There's some communities that are already at 15. I believe Falmouth is almost at 20.
Over 20.
Over 20. So what it really comes down to, both from a, if you're too low and too high, is the planning piece. So while I was short in answering yes, the secondary piece of that, which is more opinionated, is it's what are you planning to do with that money? So yes, you can keep it in unrestricted funds for longer, therefore basically violating your own policy, but what is the purpose of doing that? And there needs to be a plan, because the rating agencies look to that plan and not just the policy. So if you fall below 8.33%, and by the way, rating agencies generally state, regardless of accountants, that they want you to have no less than 5%. However, if you have a policy that states it higher, what they want to know is that if you fall below the policy line, what are you going to do to get back into accordance with that? Because they understand that there is contingencies, and there's things that happen over time. Well, I feel that there's also encumbered responsibility, that if we exceed 12% and we're gonna keep it there, then we have to do better at planning on how to use that money. So to me, it's both ends of the, of the candle there, that we're kind of looking at. The last piece that I wanted to mention was, I really appreciate the work that the Finance Committee did on this, so I want to thank Peter, who provided a lot of insight into this, as well as the town manager, and Ruth, Finance Director. I think this is a good move. I've said this over time, I've been around long enough that I remember that we were well below 5% when I first got on this council, and for us to be in this position to really support the community's growth through this type of planning is, it's an extraordinary statement to everyone, including staff members who built our community, from the infrastructure up, as well as the citizens that have supported it. And we have to keep this kind of fiscal and financial responsibility in the back of our head each time. So I really appreciate the work, and thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I had one more. I'd just like to echo the accolades we got from Mr. Turk earlier about saving up for, for a purpose. And I think that it makes a lot of sense to, if we're able to, save up for the money when we need it.
Thank you. My, my sense is, I don't like to hold on to other people's money. So I, I come at this from a slightly different point of view, that unless we have a really good purpose, and we have insurance. So you think of catastrophes, and that's what people oftentimes reference for these kinds of funds, they're available here for emergencies. And that is extremely remote, because of the comprehensive insurance coverage that we have. But on the other hand, there are some factors that are outside of our control, and we've seen them happen in budgets in a number of years in, in recent times. And that is, the state, just because of their own financial condition, finds it necessary to cut back substantially on funding that we have received. And so there are those circumstances that will be outside our control. And yes, we do need to have plans to be able to get back into conformance. One of the golden rules that the rating agencies have is abide by your own rules. That's very important to them. And if you ignore them, that will undermine your, the rating agency, and we've done very well by the rating agencies. They're not my favorite pals. If you ever saw The Big Short, or read the book, you'll, you'll know exactly what I'm talking about. But nevertheless, they're something that, I won't call it an evil, but they exist. And they have a purpose. And we have to, and we have to recognize that all our bonds get rated. And so we need to make sure that those ratings remain as they are, at a, at a very high level for a community of our size. So for, for those reasons, I am going to support this, and I particularly appreciate the effort of the Finance Committee. Further discussion? Seen none? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you. Non-action items, none. Standing special committee reports and liaison reports. Chris, let's start down with you.
Well, Energy Committee hasn't met. I was going to brief you on the school teachers' contract, but town manager beat me to the punch, so I have nothing to report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kate, you good? Gee Marie?
All I have to report is, Long Range Planning will be meeting this Friday morning at 8:00 to start the process of the comprehensive plan, you know, what we're gonna do, how we're gonna approach it, so.
Very good. Thank you. Will?
Yep. So Historic Preservation Implementation Committee met last night. One of the things that was being discussed was that there's a boundary marker that used to be over in the, the Michael's parking lot over between us and South Portland, from the 1820s. And unfortunately, it's fallen over. So, but right now, it's in possession of the Public Works, so it's safely being stored while we figure out what to do with it.
John?
So, and I hate to throw this at Tom, but I did have a finance report to issue, a copy of our fund balance, sorry, our account. So this is actually, there is no expense reported in here, Tom.
I beg your pardon?
There's a page missing, so maybe we can get that in a clean. But here are the financial statements that the Finance Committee reviewed for your purview, and we'll make sure that you get the expense page as well.
Apologies.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Town managers report?
Yes, couple of quick matters. Several weeks back, we finally did hear from the Maine Law Court regarding the so-called Pounds Next Tax Steals. And for reasons that we still don't know, there was about a three-month separation between the law court reporting on the two different consolidated cases. As we expected, the decision was kind of in lockstep with the, with the former one, so there's really no substantive change. What that does now is the remand is officially back to the local Board of Assessment Review. And we're now above the business of, of hearing this. The remand was, was very clear in some respects and very foggy in others. They really gave no proposed remedy, just said an abatement is appropriate, a reasonable abatement is appropriate. So there'll be a lot of conversation around the reasonable component of that directive. What we've decided to do is express the willingness to the other parties to enter into a mediation process. And we think it's, it's not required as part of the process, but we think it would be a worthwhile exercise for both parties to, really to perhaps get quicker to the end of this process. It's been long, it's been expensive. These are several hundred of our taxpayers. And so it just makes sense to, with all the history that's, that's gone before, to put our heads together and see if there's a way to, to kind of get this done sooner than later. If that's not successful, the local board process will follow its normal course. They'll hear the matter on the remand from the law court and make a decision. That decision is still appealable back to the court. So we have motivation to be open and honest and hear both sides, all sides of the issue, and see if we can find a way through this. Should that be successful, certainly the council will be involved with approving any kind of settlement that might come out of that process. So right now, we're just kind of trading the idea of mediation. I'm hopeful that the, the other parties will be interested in, in meeting us at the table. So I'll keep you advised. We also found out last week that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has approved what's called the Great Thicket National Wildlife Refuge. And I don't, I must admit, there's, there's more to this I don't understand than I do. But the service has approved it, which now gives the agency and its staff some authorities to actually go about the business of acquiring, either by fee interest or easement, a pretty large chunk of land. Just in Cape Elizabeth and Scarborough alone, the focus area that they've identified is some 3,200 acres. And it's around the Rachel Carson Preserve, and kind of some spur-wink road toward the ocean, but almost the entirety of the shorefront. And there's, of those 3,200 acres or so, 800 of which are really the target area. So we need to know more about that. And I've been in communication with Senator Collins' office, who is asking a lot of these basic questions, and has agreed to meet with, with us in Cape Elizabeth, so we better understand this. And when I do know more, I'll share that with you. But it potentially could have a big impact. I could imagine that there will be conservation reasons at the very least, and it will dictate what can and can't happen within that area. So it's something to pay attention to, for sure. I wanted to, lastly, just report on Pine Point Road. I believe it was at the last council meeting, a member of the public spoke at the podium regarding the bridge replacement. Sidewalks were never planned as part of that, but what is planned, there are two 12-foot travel lanes, and there's six-foot shoulders on both sides of the road. So there's no vertical separation by way of curve or a conventional sidewalk, but there's certain, certainly a comfortable width to cross that, that bridge section. So that's the, the report on that. And then also, I just want to mention, in the CIP budget this year, we did get funding to start some preliminary engineering in the Pine Point area. We're gonna be doing some, we call it master planning, but it's really appreciating kind of the full build-out from a pedestrian point of view and, and traffic point of view, but also focusing intently on East Grand Avenue, which is in dire need of attention. There's chronic flooding issues and stormwater dischasm issues in that area, very, very low. And if you've ever taken note, there's virtually no reveal left on the sidewalk. It's been paved so many times through the years, that the systems really need to be replaced. And as part of that, we'll have to look at the East Grand-Pine Point intersection, which is a very interesting design, I'll say. But before we get too far down the road, and this is based on some experience with, with neighborhoods, but Pine Point in particular, these folks are very interested in their neighborhood. And we've, we're gonna engage them in a neighborhood meeting on November 15th, just to kind of introduce the issue and start to get some initial feedback. And we are well aware that public participation and involvement will be a key part of this process as we go forward. Should we have any great revelations out of that meeting, I'm pleased to share those back with you, and I'll publicize that a bit more, if anyone wishes to attend.
I got an email from a resident about it. I'll forward it to you.
And then as a related piece, members of the ordinance committee through the past couple of years, we, we still have not finally decided on the parking situation on that lower section of Pine Point Road from the bridge down to East Grand. Staff has been working, and several different ordinance committees have provided input through the years. And I think when the next ordinance committee is constituted, we'd like to bring that back and see if we can actually make some progress and move forward. And that timing is really important, because there's money to repave that section of the road that we had delayed, so we could have some additional time locally to sort out these sort of parking issues. So that's an issue that the future council will see, certainly early in the new year, if we can move it along quick enough. So thank you.
Thank you. Chris, did you have a question?
I did, through the chair, if I could. Is there any plans, Tom, for striping or marking those six-foot lanes, kind of like we did down at Eastern Trail Road, to really kind of distinguish them as pedestrian-bike friendly, and not just kind of put a yellow stripe and say there's a gap? You know what I mean?
Yeah, the typical paint, striping detail is for a thick, like six-foot white fog line, they call it, sort of solid line. It very clearly marks the edge of the travel lane. I think we can look to different options, to, to crosshatch or otherwise, put some different striping in that area, maybe even some of the placards that show a bicycle symbol, something like that, just to give motorists and pedestrians a better sense of where they should be on the road.
I think that would be helpful, yeah.
I'll, I'll look at that. That's a cheap fix.
Thank you, Chris. Counselor comments? Let's start down with Sean.
Thank you. Four things. First is, for a couple of years, including even going way back, I've asked and tried, and I've always forgotten until I saw a picture a couple nights ago, about having the council take an annual picture altogether. Back in the early 2000s, when I was first elected, we would actually stand around the chair and have a picture with the emblem. And it was really a nice commemorative thing, and I would like to see us actually do that before we lose Jean-Marie in particular. But it's also a nice parting gift. I think that, well, she is leaving, I mean. So anyways, oh, I just think it would be very nice if we started that tradition. Plus, I think it would actually be a better picture than the ones that we get in the annual report, that's just a mugshot. So I was hoping that if it's okay with the chair, if next meeting, if everyone wore their suit and tie and their Sunday best, that we could have that picture, since it will be the last one with all the councilors sitting in, that we maybe do that every year. I think that's a better parting gift than a plaque that will never get hung up in your house. Next, I did want to mention, because there's been a lot of talk, and I've gotten a lot of comments, about political signs, and particularly political signs that are on the Route 1 Marsh Corridor, as well as the Pine Point Marsh Corridor. I really hope that maybe a future council, and maybe not right now, but we do look at what, if we can, to try to control that better. I've been very fortunate to run for, run for office five times over the last 17 years, and never once had to put a sign there to get elected. I don't think you need to, and it ruins something very beautiful. And when high tide, sorry, when low tide happens, you see all those signs that fall into the marsh that never get picked up, that I think is absolutely horrible. So maybe if there's something that we can do as a council going forward without restricting free speech, I think it would be very, very nice. Wanted to also mention, don't forget to vote. There is no one to blame but yourself if you don't vote, so get out and vote. There's opportunities, I believe tomorrow is the last day, without exceptional circumstances. But it is next Tuesday, so I heard Tody and the staff have been extremely busy. So thank you, Tody. Gee Marie, I'll save you for later, and I did want to say one thing, two more things, sorry. One is, so Halloween, I hope everyone had a great Halloween. This is the first year, I actually was driving home really quick to try to get the Halloweeners in. And I go by, there's a business on Route 1 that already has Christmas lights out. I get home, and it's all Christmas shows on TV while we're handing out candy. So I have to say, it's 52 days, 3 hours, and 15 minutes before it's Christmas. And I did want to say happy 19th anniversary to my wife. This is 14 of them I've had to spend a year. With you.
Congratulations.
Cool.
Nice.
Will?
So I wanted to echo Sean's plea for everyone to get out and vote. I also wanted to wish good luck to the, to the candidates. It's gonna be over soon, so.
One way or another.
One way or another, that's right. Heaven help us all. But I also mentioned last time that I'd gone truck-or-treating, and I ran into Chief Moulton there. And I hope he'll indulge me, because I took a picture with, or with my daughters with, with Chief Moulton, and it came out really nicely, so I sent it to him. And he responded with a couple of really nice handwritten notes, and some coloring books, and I really appreciate it. And I really wanted to read the note, one of the notes, just because I really think it speaks to our chief police's character, and I really, really appreciate it. And it says, "Dear Emerson, it was very nice to meet you on Saturday. I liked your Batwoman costume. This world needs more strong and brave women who will help others that need it. Great job, and thank you for having your picture taken with me, Chief Moulton." Thank you.
Gee Marie?
I will just say, absolutely, everyone get out and vote. Every vote counts. I know people think it doesn't, but they do. We end up with a lot of recounts in this state. So if you think your vote doesn't count, think again. It does. You can, as been mentioned, you can vote tomorrow, it's the last day to do the, it's technically called absentee. And every other state, they call it early, but I'm not gonna go into the differences into that. Without exceptional circumstances, Tuesday, the polls are open from 7:00 a.m. till 8:00 p.m., and it's at the high school. So please, you know, come. It's, it's, we have a lot of volunteers there, and I'm hoping we're having some sort of a table there. I didn't hear back, other than I know Sean can't be there, because he's gotta work, as Will mentioned. But we'll, we'll take care of that afterwards. And then I just want to take a minute, just basically, my husband, Jeff McLean, has been on the fire department for 25 years, and he just retired, as of Halloween today. His grandfather, Albert Libby, was one of the founders of Engine Five, North Scarborough. And Jeff stepped in, I don't know if the chief remembers this story, but he started one week before I was due with my daughter, Katerina. And his first duty was supposedly to work Hurricane Gloria. And my mother called him up and said, "You're not leaving my daughter alone, nine months pregnant?" So he wasn't able- So, he wasn't able to go work at the fire department that day, but that's okay. But he did serve as a lieutenant and a captain, and I want to thank the fire department very much for putting up with my husband all those years. And I know he felt, oh my God, I've just been, he's been debating on, should I, shouldn't I, should I, shouldn't I, but, so, happy retirement, Jeff.
It's not like he doesn't have anything to do.
He's got nothing else to do, that's great.
I did ask Councilor St. Clair to assume responsibility for the table at the vote, and she has offered to take on that responsibility for us.
Yay, thank you.
Councilor comments?
Um, so, a lot of times, we talk, or Jessica, Councilor Horbrook, used to do, talk about when we had deaths in Scarborough. And this is one that, you know, we haven't had a chance to talk about, and I wasn't going to bring it up because it, you know, was kind of a while ago, and we missed some meetings and things like that. But I think Scarborough as a community, and the police department, and Project Hope, you know, sustained a loss with the loss of Devin Higgins, and due recently to some nastiness, it's sort of reopened a really hard scar. Jamie, Devin's sister, is one of my best friends, Devin was a friend of mine, and I can't say enough good things about him. And I don't, did he die of a drug overdose? He did. It doesn't define him, and it didn't define him. Drugs don't define people, and it shows that this guy worked so hard for so long to try to beat this. And it just, for some reason, that just took that one time, and people need to understand that it just takes that one time. And that's why our police department is working so tirelessly to help these people. And for them to catch flak for that, or to be berated for that, or to, you know, for people to talk poorly of Devin is just, in my opinion, disgusting. And I have no tolerance for that, and I won't tolerate it. And I just felt it was important to say tonight that I think that Devin was very brave. I think what he tried to accomplish was very brave. He put himself back out there, he went and met with addicts, and admitted his mistakes, and admitted his problems, and made amends with his own family, and that takes more strength than a lot of people will ever even realize. It's not easy to admit when you make a mistake. And so, I have a lot of respect for their family, and my heart literally hurts for the Higgins family, and I think it's really important, and I hope as a council, we realize that Jamie has worked incredibly hard on Operation Hope. And due to the fact that there has been some things said this week, you know, it's really questioned her role in Operation Hope, and I don't think it's something that she should give up. I think it's something that we should stand behind her and support, and as a community, we should support the police department and her going forward. And I hope that, you know, if anyone's ever approached or asked, that that's the response that is given. She didn't not save Devin. That wasn't her, that had nothing to do with Jamie. So, I just want to make that clear. Jamie was an incredible sister to Devin, and she's an incredible worker, and she's amazing at what she does, and she's phenomenal at Operation Hope. And so, I just, I know this is more of a little bit more of a personal side than a council issue, but I felt it was necessary to say something tonight, just because of this past week, so thank you for allowing me that time.
Good job.
Thank you.
Chris?
Well, I'll try and end on a lighter note, not to make light of any of that. I agree with you 100%. I mean, any, that's a very personal and tragic loss, and the fact that she turned that into something that benefits the community with the scholarship, I think is just amazing. It speaks to her character and the impact that he had. So, I definitely will support that 100% without a doubt. I was lucky enough to attend the Gold Award Celebration at the Maine Veterans Home last week, and I just want to take a little bit of time to give you some background. This is actually a really big deal. I didn't realize the extent of the caliber of this award, but if you'll indulge me for a quick second, I'll just read some facts that I gathered before tonight. The American Healthcare Association, which is who provides this award, is a nonprofit federation of affiliate state health organizations, together representing more than 11,000 nonprofit and for-profit nursing facilities, assisted living, developmentally disabled, and sub-acute care providers that care for approximately 1 million elderly and disabled individuals each day. The, this quality award provides a pathway for providers of long-term and post-acute care services to journey towards performance excellence. The program is based on core values and criteria of the Baldridge Performance Excellence Program. And basically, there are three levels, bronze, silver, and gold. They are progressive, so you have to qualify for bronze first. Once you qualify for bronze, you can apply for silver, once you get silver, you can apply for gold. Just to give you, and it's a very formal and thorough review process to be qualified for this. Of the 11,000 members, three gold awards were given this year nationally. Scarborough was one of them. This was the first facility in the state of Maine to receive a gold award. So, it's very, very prestigious. And it's not just the Scarborough facility, the Maine Veterans Homes, all of the other fellow six facilities statewide. Scarborough has the only gold, the remaining all have silver. So, this was a pretty impressive endeavor, and it was a wonderful celebration, everybody was very proud of it. Certainly, I thought it was important for us to acknowledge that, too. It's not just another, you know, and I want to say, you know, a token, great job kind of thing. This was a lot of hard work by a lot of good people, and I think it just shows the commitment that these people have to long-term care for our veterans. On a personal note, my grandfather spent the last few months of his life there, and I can't say enough positive things about him. It's just an amazing, amazing facility, so well-deserved, very proud of it, and they should be as well. Last thing for me, I would echo the sentiment that people vote. I would also kind of express my hope that you vote down ballot. Don't just stop at the president, there's a few other things going on in the state and the town that need to be addressed as well. So, if you're taking the time to vote, be it absentee or at the polls, please fill out all the ballots, check all the boxes. I know I would certainly appreciate that, and I'm sure several others behind this table would as well. And there's a lot of things to be dealt with on the referendum questions. Whatever your position is, this is our opportunity to weigh in. So, please take the time, either early or on voting, on November 8th, to vote, and I will see many of you, I hope, out in front of the high school.
Yeah, very encouraging on the voting front. I think we had more than 1,000 new registrations, or over 16,000 registered voters. This is, it's a large block. And the, early voting has been extraordinary, so I think we're well on our way. November 19th is our next meeting. We have scheduled a workshop on the fireworks issue. Please, if you want to have your voice heard, but you can't make the meeting, and we will provide plenty of opportunity for people to give us their insight into any issues surrounding our fireworks ordinance on that evening. That's a listening session, as well as a discussion amongst the seven of us. But email us. It's easy to do, our email is available, and we would love to be able to hear what people have to say about this issue. I'll finish up. I attended the Boston Post Kane Presentation to Irene Kosky. It was at her daughter's house, Diane Mills on Spurwink. Her daughter Karen Lothrup was also there. It was really a great event. I mean, this is a cane that began, the Boston Post newspaper in Boston, Massachusetts, began it in the early 1900s to honor the oldest member of every community. The rules that have been set up in Scarborough over the years establish that you need to be a resident for the previous 20 years. And that's why we have Irene, at 97 years young, is now the honorary. And she, her smile lit up the room. It was a terrific event. We all hung around afterwards, had coffee and homemade muffins, and it was terrific. And I can't thank the Lions Club enough for their sponsorship and support. Daisy Higgins of the Boston Post Kane Committee gave the cane, as well as a plaque and pin. The Scarborough Lions Club had Pam Hartford, Gary Tapley, Bill Pape, and Jerry Butts all present, along with husbands of the Mills daughters, Mill daughters. So, it was a great event, and so, congratulations to Irene Kosky. I'll accept the motion.
Phil, I just wanted to point out, you'd mentioned the next meeting, it's actually November 16th?
16th, thank you.
Just to be sure, 16th, and though we've not established the time for that listening session, my guess is it'll be around 6:00 p.m., and we'll be preceding your regular meeting, which incidentally will be the last meeting this council sits.
Quite a way for me to go, oh, I'm quite worried.
That's right, with a bang.
Can we talk about samples?
I did, there was a press release put out, and I was reading it earlier, and Irene went to school here in Scarborough, Scarborough High School, and she was the valedictorian of her class.
Oh, cool.
And the, I guess, the sole remaining member still alive, so quite a nice life. So, if I may, I'll ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Oh, David? Thank you.